All those in favor of journeying and going into workshop?
Oh, that's unanimous, too.
How about that?
Okay.
I don't know.
So, we're gonna start off this evening. I'm gonna throw it over to Bill Giroux to talk to us about the beginning of the landfill conversation.
All right, I'll start it off and then I'm gonna get Lee Liner up at the podium and then he'll he'll get the experts from CV and Mahar, Jim Atwell and Mike Booth, who we've been working with for a long, long time. They're great consultants, do a lot of work in the state of Maine on landfills. But as you all know, the voters authorized the expansion of the landfill that we're using currently. There have been a few expansions over the years and the consultants will talk about that. That space is, it was actually due to run out, I think, last year or this year and we kinda, we slowed the flow of the waste down and we stretched it to next year because if we build the final expansion next year, the debt service from this past expansion will have run out. And it's about $300,000 worth of debt service, so it will help make room for the debt service for the expansion, which currently, it'll probably change, but currently is about $400,000 a year. So, it's gonna cost a little more than the place holder we have for debt service right now, but should be affordable within the landfill budget. We did get some good news from CV and Mahar as far as how long this next cell would last, which lets us stretch the debt out a little bit longer, makes it more affordable for the taxpayers, makes the tax increase less likely, at least for this project. So, I think, you know, part of the reason for this is to kind of educate the public before they have to vote in a November election because it would be a bond that they would authorize in November. More immediately, we're gonna be looking to you in August to schedule that vote in November for them. So, it's educating the council and then educating the people. We'll probably run this on BCTV a little more in the fall, just so people get to see the consulting engineers and what the plan is going forward. Generally, in the past, the voters have been very supportive of landfill expansions, this we think being probably the final one. And I think our landfill has been, has been very well managed. I'm trying to think, there's one, oh, I did wanna say that the, our analysis shows that expanding the landfill continues to be, pretty clearly, the more affordable option going forward. So, eventually, we have to close this landfill. If we close it now, then it would be, it would cost the taxpayers more over the next 12 years or so than it would if we continued operating it. So, really, that's why we come to you with this presentation and that's where we're kinda leading to with the vote in November, trying to save the most money. We, you know, DEP watches this closely and I think they'd agree that we have a very well-run landfill and these guys that you're gonna hear from are at the root of that. So, that said, Lee?
Thank you very much for that excellent introduction, Bill. Lee Liner, Assistant Public Works Director. So, the purpose again for tonight is to give you the background on why you're being asked to approve a bond measure to go to the voters for another landfill project. So, just a little quick history. In 2002, the city submitted an application and a plan to the Maine Department of Environmental Protection to operate and develop the landfill going into the future. We didn't know exactly how many years at the time, but it was a multi-phase project. As cells, disposal cells were filled, we would then build more cells. At the time, we were replacing, really what we had was a dump, it was unlined and was impacting the environment. So, we built our first lined landfill cells, collecting leachate and preventing it from impacting the environment any further. In 2007, we added a gas collection system and that's been operating very well since then, collecting the gas that the landfill generates. So, we've been depositing our waste in what we called Phase Two. Phase One was everything in the dump phase. Phase Two started in 2002, 2003, and we've been putting waste in there since then. And so, now, we're almost full with Phase Two. The volume that we had constructed at that time is almost full and it's time to construct the third and what would be the last disposal capacity on the site. The next available, I mean, the next project that we would do after this or in lieu of this, if that was the direction we wanted to go, would be permanent closure of the site. It is not strictly an expansion by the rules of the Department of Environmental Protection. This is just the next part of the plan that we had already submitted. They approved the plan at the time. We have to submit at present the design details and how we're, we're actually gonna build it to them, but the idea is that this area that is available for us to add to, they have already approved for the use that we're proposing. So, at this time, I wanna introduce our engineers. Jim Atwell and Mike Booth have been working for CV and Mahar Engineers and the company's been working for the city since 2000. They've designed all of the infrastructure components of the site and have been our partners essentially since that time. Jim and Mike will do a slideshow presentation and show you what we're talking about.
Good evening. My name's Jim Atwell, as Lee had indicated, and we're going to have a slide, bit of a PowerPoint presentation that will take you through the landfill, talk a little bit about what we're going to be doing this year in 2016, and then spend most of our time talking about the new construction that will take place in 2017. As I said, we wanna start off talking about the landfill status and some work that we need to do in 2016 and what's, we'll have a couple of photos here that I need for orientation in a minute, but the landfill that, that cell that we're operating in right now has, as of last fall, November, when we did the most recent survey, had disposal capacity of about 50,000 yards. That's not quite enough to get us through the time until 2017, when we will have cell Phase Three ready to go. Why don't you go to the first slide? Actually, we've really talked, what we're gonna talk about, as I mentioned, we're gonna talk about the work that we need to do in 2016 and early 2017 to get us the capacity that we need through the fall of 2017. We're gonna talk about the 2017 landfill development project and then provide some information on budgets and the landfill construction schedule. Yeah, this, for orientation purposes, this is a photograph of the landfill that was taken in November of 2015. You know, the landfill outline that's currently active, you can see the active landfill is this area right here. This is the access road that was constructed in the summer of 2015. The black material that you see here is the intermediate plastic cover that has been installed about every other year since, for the past several years. The Phase Three area that we're talking about expanding in is this area right here, the grass-covered area. We're gonna talk a little bit about the surge pond and that's the existing surge pond. The flare is located here and the leachate pump station right here. Go to the next slide. Okay, so, as I mentioned, as of the fall of 2015, we had about 50,000 cubic yards of landfill capacity remaining. And this capacity isn't quite enough to get us through until the fall of 2017. So, we need to do some work this summer and early fall to get us to the point where we have the capacity to get us through next fall. And what we're going to be doing is we need to peel back some of the existing intermediate cover. We need to regrade the landfill, to steepen the slopes and to create a working platform for the existing operation and to regain some capacity that has been lost over the last few years because of settlement. So, the landfill settles, it shrinks, and then you can fill that capacity again as time goes on. And we need to squeeze as much capacity out of the landfill as we can this year. And then, as part of the operation, we do need, we do need to place some intermediate cover in areas that we won't be placing waste in over the next year and a half. And rather than using plastic this time, we're going to be using a product called short paper fiber. It's a material that is a recycled material provided by Casella Organics. It's been used widely throughout the state over the last 10 to 15 years for a number of purposes, but part of it is for short-term intermediate cover at the landfill. And this material will be placed in 2016, maybe early 2017. Will be in place for a year, year and a half, and then it will be covered with plastic as we go into Phase Three. And then later, while we're doing this work on the current landfill in 2016, we will also be doing the design and permitting for Phase Three during the same period, during the summer, fall of 2016. So, what does the 2017 landfill project consist of? And it consists of three primary items. It's the construction of the Phase Three cell at the north end of the site. We will be doing some final cover placement on the south end of the landfill, areas that won't be filled in the future. We'll, we're there at final grade and while we're there, the state would want us to, and I think it's good practice, to put the final cover on that part of the site. And then, we also, in those portions of Phase Two, Cells Two, Three and Two Four, which will be filled over in the next phase, in Phase Three, and we'll talk about that in a couple of minutes, we need to put some landfill gas infrastructure in. We need to place some plastic cover. And this is a relatively small project, but it's similar to the landfill construction that was done in the summer of 2015. The biggest part of this project is the Phase Three construction at the north end of the landfill. And that involves three primary pieces of work. And I'll just list them here and then talk a little bit more as we go on. But we do need to construct the liner for Phase Three, which is the base that we're gonna build on. We need to put in some infrastructure to manage the leachate and the landfill gas that's produced as part of the landfill operation. And then, there are some modifications to the surge pond that are really critical to everything that we're talking about doing in 2017, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Next slide, Mike? So, this is a schematic view of the landfill that sort of identifies the key pieces of work that we just talked about. Again, we've got the Phase Three construction, liner construction, which will take place in this north end of the site. We have final cover, 2017 final cover, that will be in this general area of the landfill, areas where no waste will be placed in the future. And then, we have a portion of this area here, which is, which will receive intermediate cover as part of this overall project. So, we've got the three pieces. We've got the Phase Three construction, we've got the final cover, and we've got intermediate cover, and again, the surge pond, which is, you know, where a lot of the action will be. If you go to the profile, the next slide, Mike? So, I'm gonna spend a little bit of time here, but for orientation purposes, this is just a, this like running a slice through the landfill from north, from south to north. This is the south end of the landfill. This is the north end of the landfill. And the area below is the old historic area, Phase One, as Lee talked about it. And then, Phase Two is in the blue. And the 2002 construction was right here, Cell Two, One and Two Two, and then Cells Two, Three and Two Four, this area. And this is where we're operating right now. The next phase of the landfill is shown in yellow. And a couple of things to, or get you oriented, this low piece right here is where the surge pond is currently located. And this is the grass, the grassy knoll, the grassy area on the north end of Phase Two that you saw in the previous figure. And what, what happened, you know, when Bill spoke, we talked a little bit about being able to increase the capacity and life of the landfill through some subtle changes to the landfill development plan for Phase Three. When, you know, Mike and I started looking at Phase Three in detail, you know, a few months ago, we, it became, you know, apparent that some of the planning that was done in the late 1990s, which made sense at the time, and used technologies that existed at that time and common practice, you know, had some limitations. And we've learned a lot since that time. And so, we've been able to, you know, take some steps that will increase the capacity and life of the landfill, reduce the unit cost of disposal, and provide advantages to the city and also the DEP. And what, there's a couple of things here. First, this narrow band right here of yellow was Phase Three, as it was proposed in the late 1990s. This is what's called Phase Four at the time. So, there was a Phase Three, Phase Four, both quite small. And so, in the original plan that was created, this is the approximate landfill envelope that would be filled. What we have done is looked at this leachate surge pond because initially, Phase Three wasn't going to be filled, that leachate surge pond would remain in its current fashion and wouldn't be filled over. Something that's become more common now is to create a leachate storage sump, or a sump, in the same place that the pond now is. Fill it with permeable material that provides storage for leachate, and then it gives us the opportunity to place waste over that surge pond. So, we're filling an area that was pretty large, had a lot of capacity, that just wasn't being well-used. We've met with, I think, I mentioned, we've met with DEP a couple of times to talk about that concept. Their acceptance of that, accepting of that concept and, you know, where we're, moving forward with that. As I mentioned, what we're doing with the surge pond is that we're taking the surge pond and converting it into an internal leachate sump that will be constructed internal to the landfill and beneath the landfill. As I mentioned, these are common features now that are used in many landfills. So, it's a, it's a practice that wasn't in place in 1900s and now it is. So, this is a pretty rough schematic of what we're proposing to do. And this is a photograph of the existing leachate storage pond. You can see that there's a plastic liner there. What we would be doing as part of this project would be removing, or at least breaking up the existing liner so that we can deal with gas and so forth. We would place a new liner and then install internal leachate pumps, leachate collection system, that will allow us to remove the leachate from the sump that we've created. Sure, go ahead.
So, the concept right now is that what you're gonna do is you'll do the Phase Three right up till you fill the pond in, or is this something you create and immediately you start filling it in so that that can be?
Well, we don't, we don't, we, when we talk about the surge pond, the surge pond will remain, will remain a leachate management feature.
Sure.
So, it'll stay there. We will reline it, we'll put some permeable material in it, and then we'll cover it. And that will be part of the liner system for the landfill and we will begin early on placing waste.
So, then, when you, when we close the landfill, the theory then is that this thing's sealed and any rainwater doesn't permeate down through except for the top soil layer or whatever's on top of all this?
That runs off.
There's no need, nothing else goes into the sump because it's then, in fact, sealed to the elements of that?
Well, there'll still be.
The sump is actually built right in front of the liner system. It's all contiguous, one contiguous piece.
Right.
And there's storage space within that sump that even handles the flows during the operations. So, when it's closed out, you're correct, all the water will be shed off there. So, the amount of water that that sump will have to handle will be greatly.
So, it's obviously pushed out past, once this thing's closed, that water's not gonna go down, hit our roads and come back into that sump because it's a closed system at that point?
But there will continue to be water draining over a period of time.
But yes, you're, you're right on, right on the mark.
This is actually a picture of actually, of a sump being built in another facility. And the picture on the left is a carrier pipe, so this is through, we actually slide pumps down those carrier pipes and those big, those are 24-inch pipes, have a bunch of holes in them.
Okay.
And they're backfilled. The picture on the right is that the backfilled around those were stone.
Yep.
And then we put another layer, usually like big pieces of tires, chips around them to provide that storage capacity.
Okay.
So, it's a sump-type system and the water will flow in there, will fill up, and then it will pump out of the sump.
Goes up to our sewer system in a way?
Yeah.
Good.
And then the way the pumps, that little building on the side, the pumps come out of there, you can open those carrier pipes and pull the pumps out if you have to maintain.
Okay, that's where my next question was gonna be.
Yeah, so it's a system that.
Easily serviced then into the future?
Absolutely.
Gotcha.
It's like pulling a well pump out of a well. There's a, you know, a pitless adapter.
And one of the advantages of this approach, it, you know, it includes some work in the leachate surge pond, you know, a storage pond area as part of this project, but when closure occurs, we won't, it's something that will already have been done and it'll reduce the amount of maintenance long-term after the landfill is closed. So, this approach has advantages today, or certainly in 2017, to the city.
In your experience or what you've found so far in these systems, are they, they're 10 years old now with the closed facilities or not that old yet?
Oh, yeah, probably 15.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Not 100.
Right, right, right.
But yes.
So, but you find then that you get to a point where the pumps, in fact, don't run all that often because?
Yes.
Let's go ahead.
Yeah. And so, what's nice about them, you can actually change out the pumps. You could put a smaller pump in.
Okay.
Because you don't have to handle as much flow.
Sure.
And you can also clean those, you can clean those systems out. What happens is sometimes you'll see spines get into there. You can kind of flush those out and rehabilitate the system until you close it up and then you're basically sealing the whole landfill off. There's no way water can get in. What Jim said is there's water that drains out over a period of time.
Sure.
And we've actually have a couple of landfills that are about the fifth year of closure and the amount of leachate that, built with the exact same systems, the amount of leachate is just dropping off exponentially. It's just, you know, you're basically draining what's there, what's caught, before you close it. And it generates a small amount of leachate, but it's a significantly less amount than what's caught during the open operation.
Good, 'cause I know we have to budget for a lot of pump stations at our sewage treatment plants and that's.
Yeah. And so, and so, you know, the pump, sort of, to replace a pump, you pull out, usually use a flexible hose.
Yeah, it sounds like it's.
Unhook it, you know, put the pump back on. It's a typical well pump, you know, $1,000 well pump, throw it back down, turn it on.
Yes.
People who have these systems have been very happy with them. And what, the other thing that DEP likes about them is we eliminate penetrations through the liner system.
Yeah.
The current pond has that and those, no matter how, how hard you try to make those tight, you always have the potential for a leak and it creates some issues. So, you're always trying to solve that. What Jim was also saying is your, that liner is exposed to the sunlight and what breaks down liners is really that exposure to the sunlight. Now, it's all covered and we've taken away the sunlight and, you know, eventually the pond liner that's there now would have to be replaced because it would break down,
Right.
You know, in 20, 25, 30 years because of the sun exposure. And that's eliminated by this approach.
And so, that's what I meant when we said it's a little bit of a win-win operation. There is some operation and financial advantages to the city and DEP gets the benefit of fewer penetrations and really a better system. And the city gets some additional capacity.
Like that?
So, this is some information on the Phase Three construction. Sort of talked about, we're doing about four acres. We have steepened the slopes that we're filling to on the north end. The capacity in, for Phase Three is 354,000 cubic yards. Currently handling about 30,000 cubic yards a year, so that provides about, almost 12 years of capacity, starting in the fall of 2017. The total capital cost for this part of the project, $2.8 million. And one of the things that, that's sort of a, you know, a number that we look at is the capital cost per cubic yard of landfill capacity. And for this project, that's about $8 per cubic yard, which is at the low end of the benchmark cost that we typically see for landfill, new landfill capacity per cubic yard. And part of the reason that that number is so low is because, you know, we're putting a lot of waste over an existing liner system that was installed in 2002 and in 2007, 2008.
Bill, is that, are we running at 30,000, like this now, currently, 2015, 16?
That's a, that's a question for Lee. I'm pretty sure that we are maintaining the current amount, yeah. Which is down from what it was a few years ago. We had to tone it down to stretch the life of the current cell into late this year and early 2017. And we're, and that hurt us on, from a revenue point, but in order to get, you know, 11.8 years down the road, we intend to continue that flow. Now, that, that occasionally changes because we survey occasionally what's in there and whether we can move more in or not. We call it putting your foot on the gas pedal and taking it off, based on revenues needed and stretching the life of the landfill.
So, Lee, where were we at two years ago? Was it 50,000 cubic yards or?
More, yeah, more like 40.
40, okay.
Yeah.
So, not a dramatic decrease then?
No, no. Our market is not that huge, so, you know, the sizes are small, but a good change for us.
Good.
And at one point, we were spending, we were subsidizing the landfill with a little over $1 million in tax, taxes a year. And now, this year, we were, or, yeah, the current year, I believe, was just $590,000 in revenue. So, you can tell as we slowed it down, we lost a little revenue.
Sure.
But we're operating it fine, your budget's fine, you know, everything's going well.
Lee and I were just talking, you know, another, you know, advantage that the landfill provides is that the wastewater sludge from the wastewater treatment plant now goes to the landfill. And whereas that used to be handled by an outside contractor, so there are some other advantages.
Does that count as a cover material?
No.
Unfortunately, not. And when we, you know, when we do our financial projections, we had to account for the fact that we were gonna lose a place to put our, our treatment plant waste. So, under this scenario, this expansion, we saved money at the plant as well. We calculated that.
Yeah, no, that's been a great savings for us, I know.
Okay. This is, slide identifies the, you know, budget for all of the work contemplated for 2017. And we can see, we talked about constructing the landfill liner that the landfill sell and dealing with the leachate surge pond and the, and the storage sump, 2.8 million. There is landfill gas and some leachate infrastructure and some other infrastructure-type things that need to be done. That's estimated at $370,000. We have the intermediate cover and landfill gas infrastructure that we talked about in Phase Two. We have the intermediate cover and landfill gas infrastructure that we talked about, uh, in Phase II at $380,000. This project is, is, as I mentioned, pretty similar to what we did, um, a little bit larger in scope, but similar to the project that was done in 2015. And then the final cover, uh, cost on the south end of the landfill of $250,000 for the total capital cost for the 2017 projects of 3.8 million. And then, uh, yeah, we, we did, and, and this, there are a lot of assumptions that go into this type of, of evaluation, but, you know, we put together some information that, it talks about 354,000 cubic yards of capacity, all information that you've seen, 12 years of life. The landfill will be full at 30,000 cubic yards a year in July of 2029. The idea that you'd be doing closure in the construction season of 2030. And you can generate some, um, uh, the city generates some revenue for, uh, the disposal of waste at the landfill. And at about $50 a ton, which I, is a number that I think Lee has used, and based on the volumes that we've provided, it generates about a half a million dollars a year. And over the next, um, you know, 12 years, 11.8 years, we'll generate about $5.9 million in, in revenue. So it's, uh, you know, I think they're trying to show that it's cost, it's a cost-effective investment at, at a crude, at a high level. It's just eliminate, this, you know, but that's just a rough analysis or an evaluation that we did. Just talking, we, uh, want to just go through the schedule, the key points. Um, here we are tonight, making a presentation to the council for informational purposes. You know, we will be, you know, although we've kind of started, but we'll begin in earnest the, uh, uh, final design of, uh, this landfill project, of the three projects. Uh, begin the permit preparation process, um, in July. Uh, as Bill had mentioned, uh, the council will be voting on whether or not to put, uh, a bond for the landfill on the November ballot in August. Uh, our plan is to have the package, uh, permit application package submitted to DEP, you know, in early November. We hope that the, or at least, we'll, we'll assume that the voters approve the bond issue in, in November. And then, uh, the next slide, Mike, the last one. You know, we've got the DEP review process, and it's going to take a while. This is, you know, although, uh, we've had several conversations with DEP, we have, when we have spoken with them, we're going to be working very closely with them over the next several months so that there aren't any surprises. If they have problems, they'll tell us early on, and we'll work them out. Uh, but that we, we want to have DEP, uh, approval and a permit in hand next spring. We want to go through the procurement bidding process early next year when contractors are trying to build backlog, and, and our experience has been that you just get better prices early in the year. And so that's our, our plan, even if it involves going to bid based on the plans that DEP is reviewing. If we need to issue a change order or two prior to the final bid opening because of tweaking that we need to do with DEP, we can do that. But we think this is the best, um, approach for this project, to get contractors interested, get the bids in place, uh, early in the year, and then begin construction on or about June, uh, next year. We don't want to start when it's muddy, we'd really wait until the weather's a little bit better with completion of the Phase III portion of the project in September so that we can begin using, uh, Phase III in September of 2017. And then we would go, um, after that into the, uh, work that needs to be done in, 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 in Phase II, the intermediate cover, the gas infrastructure and so forth. And that will wrap things up, and then it'll be easy sailing for, for Lee and Peter for the next 11.8 years. Anyway, thank you very much, and if you have questions, Mike and I would be more than glad to answer them.
Yes. Um, in your experience, how do you see communities using their lan, closed landfills? Can you put structures on them? I mean, obviously, it's probably pretty unstable ground.
Yeah, I know, yeah. The, 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 the answer is...
Anything you've seen, I mean...
Probably the most, I'll, I'll call it, the most thing that's happened, you've seen a lot of people with a lot of interest in, is putting solar panels on them. Um, there's a lot of interest in that, there's only about probably one, I think, in one state right now in the state of Maine that has it, but there, there's probably 20 or 30 sites that are actively being looked at right now for solar installations.
The, the, the action of the legislature in this last, the most recent session kind of put a bit of a damper on some of those projects, but that could change, uh, this land isn't going away.
No.
I think we have one proposal to raise goats on it, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, some of it's used for recreational purposes, and, and one of our clients called, and they have basically pet goats, and, and, uh, they asked for permission to come in and graze on the, uh, uh, grass on the closed landfill during the summer. So, so theoretically, the goats wouldn't harm the cover, and they wouldn't have to mow the grass.
Brilliant.
Typically, DEP has not, has not, does not want you to do anything on, on a closed landfill. Now, that has changed with this whole advent of the solar, you know, interest in solar. They realize that, look, there's a valuable resource here, it's open space, you know, can we use it somehow? So that's slowly kind of changing. But, you know, you, you do have a fairly, you have a designed cover system, similar to what you have in, on your base liner system. So you have to be careful about what you can do on it.
Yep.
Because, you know, we are talking about putting plastic on side slopes and stuff like that.
There, there's been some use for recre, cross-country skiing, you know, with, with careful...
Sledding hill, walk your dog.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are, I mean, in, in Portland, uh, the old closed Portland landfill, different cover system, but I think as time goes on, you know, there'll, the opportunities will, for using it.
The other guy pointed, in Portland, uh, they use a radio control, there's a, you know, the EcoMaine, or, is it EcoMaine or Dolph?
Yeah, those.
Yes, they were. And they have a, a landing strip for the radio-controlled airplanes and helicopters and stuff like that.
Interesting.
Susan?
Um, this north end where Phase III is going to be, in the, the pond, et cetera, is very close to the whiskey trail that comes down and around there. I'm not sure if you all have done that.
Oh, oh, yeah, yep.
So do you have to work with them at all as far as access to that end of the landfill? Or, I mean, it's all within the boundary?
Yeah, we...
It's our trail.
Yeah, this is, this was what the permitted, the boundary is kind of, that end of where we're going is what was originally permitted, and kind of the access road, we're not going kind of beyond the access road that's there now.
There's a road there.
So it won't affect it, no?
So, so now it shouldn't really...
Yeah. Want to get, want to, go to the aerial photo, Mike.
Actually, we do work with, uh, the land trust on access. There are a couple of gates through the chain link fence that's around most of the site, so whenever they need to get out there and do maintenance or rescue somebody, or whatever they need to do, we typically can work out the details. But the construction is going to be several hundred feet at least away from where the trail is, yeah.
So if the voters were to decide this wasn't a project they wanted to move forward with, what are the other options we would need to look at for getting rid of our, our garbage?
Well, we'd have to go through the same exercise that actually many towns are going through in the state right now due to the, uh, well, I won't say closure, but the, the change in the marketplace for facilities that will accept waste. Um, in the northern part of the state, there's a facility that's been accepting waste from 187 towns. And just due to the, I won't get into the details, but the market's changed a bit, and almost all of those towns are now out trying to figure out what the best alternative is. We would have to do the same thing. Um, approach all the existing facilities, whoever was open at that time. We'd like to know what, what you'll charge us to accept our waste, here's how much, and then figure out how to get it there and how much that's going to cost.
But inevitably, it would be more expensive in the long run.
We think more expensive than doing this project.
Continue to, continuing to maintain our own and expand our own.
Yeah, and there's some, you know, intangible benefits to having your own, to being in control of your own destiny, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the market is a bit, uh, rough, rough seas right now because all those towns are out there trying to figure out, you know, the pieces are moving on the, on the market play, uh, I don't want to say the, the chessboard. So having your own and kind of sticking, uh, in your comfort zone right now, not a bad thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Susan?
So if we decide to go for this and put the bond on the ballot, it would be very important to be able to talk to voters about what that alternative cost is going to be. So it would be good if we could have some sort of...
Ballpark.
Some, yes.
Talking points even of...
Yeah.
This is why we need you to vote for this bond.
Well, the, the analysis that we do, um, has so many variable factors in it that, you know, to, to hand out spreadsheets might not be a great idea. But I, I gave it another review this afternoon, I sat down with Lee and Julie, and it's clear that our projections would be, and, and given there's an unstable market, which could cost us even more, depending on what happens, but I think it's still like it was in '05, '06 where it's probably going to cost us $200,000 to $400,000 more a year. And I think, you know, so I, I thought we'd run this video of this workshop, and people will know because I'm, I appreciate you asking that. It's clearly going to cost more, um, because we still would be running a, um, a transfer facility up there, and there's costs associated with that. There are costs, there are capital costs as you go along. You know, DEP's not going to just forget that we have a landfill. They're going to be there all the time, still checking and make sure everything's functioning, and we're going to have to come to you with capital costs. Those are a lot, there are variables become, because that, there are variables because we don't know for certain what the market's going to do on tipping fees at other facilities. But I think I can tell you, I, I reviewed it again today to make sure I could tell you with a straight face that it's going to be significantly more. One other mild advantage, uh, is that, remember, you are putting money away for closure every year. You don't have the money for closure now, so if we don't expand, we have to close. We're going to have to borrow the money, and then we'd be paying it back. Now, we could probably do that fine, but I think the council would probably prefer to have the money saved up for closure, or at least the largest part of it, when we hit 2029 or 2030 and have to move forward. Also, you're, you're all aware of, you know, this windfall we may potentially have in 2025 when the original land level tiff runs out. That would be a better time for the city to be looking at closure than right now.
To kind of back up what Bill was saying, um, I was part of the committee where we did, um, pay-as-you-throw and recycling and all this, and what he's saying is exactly right. Um, and just to add to that, one of the things that we talked about then and still is true today is it'd be so, it'd be nice to push this thing back as far as we can get it, because who knows what happens in 2020 when they say, "Oh, we've got a great new recycling program, and we're going to take everything and turn it into, whatever they're going to turn it into." And we might even then be able to push our landfill back even further, and like these gentlemen are saying, control our costs because obviously fuel's not going down. Well, it did, but it's going back up. But it's like I say, it's one of those volatile things, you don't know if, what it's going to be next or what the next road tax is or the next whatever, and it just, I just think it's really smart to keep this, like Lee was saying, you know, keep this thing in our back pocket because we've got one, and you can't get them anymore, and so...
Well, the, and we can always be constantly reminding people that when you throw something in the trash, it's got to go somewhere. And this is where our trash is going, so for people to be recycling makes a lot of sense, and for people to be composting. Composting, there's so much food that's being thrown away into this landfill, and that, you can get one of those composting bins through the city every spring at cost. That's going to reduce your garbage by so much. And then you have soil that you can just throw out into your garden, it's wonderful. Um, but we need to, as we move along, think about where this trash is going. The trash, I suspect that in the original Phase I, that trash was nothing like what you're seeing today. I, I, I don't even know what they were throwing away at that point, but, um...
A lot more paper than, because they didn't have, back in the 50s, 60s, there weren't paper recycling programs that the way they are now. So there was a lot more paper and that type of material, um, so, but, but you're right, it has changed.
But, and a lot less plastic back then.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, essentially, no.
And plastic ain't going anywhere.
And they weren't metal recycling, so the tin cans and the glasses, the glass jars with your mayonnaise and mustard. Um, yeah, I, I'm dating myself, but, uh, yeah. In my early career, I pawed through a lot of, um, rubbish.
It's like treasure, right?
Well, it's, you know, someone's got to do it.
There was just, uh, a couple of mon, a couple of weeks ago, there was a SWANA, which is a professional organization who deals with solid waste in America, Solid Waste Association of North America. They had a conference in New England looking at waste, because, you know, the whole New England is in, under the same situation as, there's, we're running out of space to put waste. And, you know, one of the questions that came up, and so the, the panel was made up of, of haulers who deal with it, and one of the questions was, what does the waste look like? And they, they brought up the point, they said, "The waste definitely looks different now than it did in the past." And they said, "It used to, there used to be a lot more newsprint and, and, you know, we still have paper, but they say it's a different type of paper and stuff." So they, they see much less of that, you know, the volumes are about, it's interesting, the volumes are the same, but they said there's definitely a different mixture than it was, you know, 10, 15 years ago. And a lot of, they, they really noticed the difference in the lack of, you know, the cardboard, the, the papers that are easily recyclable. Those have been removed relatively efficiently, you know, with a lot of recycling programs.
That's good. That's good.
So you guys obviously designed transfer stations as well then?
Yep, yeah.
So, um, what are we looking at? Because obviously we have, I'm assuming, a, a transfer station up there now, sort of. You, you can drop off your drywall and your roofing and your metal and your whatnot and your recyclables and all that. Um, uh, do you see another huge cost coming in 2030, 30 to make it a transfer station? More than what it is now, or are we kind of in a good place with that part of it?
Yeah, I think that's...
Well, that's going to largely depend on what you want to operate there. So at present, we're recycling about 30 different waste streams. As you say, it comes in, it goes out, none of that's getting buried in the landfill. Do you want to continue to operate that kind of, you know, site at that time? Do we want to accept fewer items? Do we want to accept no items? So, you know, that'll certainly be a decision.
Well, I mean, just, I, I guess that's kind of what the question, I mean, do we...
Some of the, I know some of the towns, like, like, I live in North Yarmouth, and, you know, we had a, a dump, and it got closed. And the, the valuation, do we do a, build a transfer station, or we go to a paper bag? And a lot of the towns, you know, in the greater Portland area, we go paper bags, we put our trash out in a bag.
Sure.
It gets picked up in a packer truck and gets hauled, you know, to EcoMaine.
But not to put you on the spot, but what do you do with your recyclables of yard waste?
Yard waste goes in the ba, in the woods.
It's North Yarmouth after all.
But, uh, but, or, or, you know, so the, you know, you have paper, paper bag, and the recyclables sit right next to it and other things. So the trucks come and they have half of it's recyclable and half of it's...
I think what he's getting at is that, you know, because we have paper bag and single stream, the stuff that doesn't fall into that. And at some point in seven or eight years, I think the city will start looking at, are they going to run some kind of transfer facility, or will they just privatize, um, that piece? Which, you know, we have a private operation in West Bath that's operating.
Is that something we can at least look at so we know that, you know?
It's, it's kind of early, uh, councillor, you know, I mean, we're talking 12 years from now. I would say, let's build this cell, get several years into the operation, and maybe four or five years leading up to that, we should be studying where our waste is then going to go, all, all the different wastes. Um, to study that now, we, we don't really know what the market's going to be like at that point, so it would be jumping the gun a little. I, in the, in the cost assumptions, I assumed that we would be running a facility, but the city council will decide that in 10 years.
Right.
You can still be here.
Sure.
I just want to touch on something that Lee said for the public's benefit. Um, in the 1980s, the state closed most of the landfills in the state. There's very few landfill options. Um, Bath is very unique in that owns and operates a landfill. Um, and in that way, as Lee referred to, we, the city controls its own solid waste destiny. Uh, once we close the landfill, then there will be no, you know, then we'll have to find that option. And that's going to mean we'll be paying not just... And that's gonna mean we'll be paying not just for closure, but for disposal. And that could be trucking it all the way up to Orrington, it, it could go to Massachusetts, we have no idea. That cost is really an unknown. It's very difficult to get that cost today, because whether you go to EcoMaine or Perk, they give you all these different rates unless you're a member of community. So, so it's very complicated. And we've tried to hash some of this out, and you, you get these range of numbers, but all of those ranges are high. And it all depends upon how far it's going. Trucking costs can be, can vary depending on the price of oil. So, as long as we have this landfill open, then we have choices, or the city has choices. And that can mean taking in less waste and looking at other alternatives. But, you know, at one point, we looked at closing the landfill several years ago, and I can say, just based on the cost we've looked at since then, that it was definitely an advantage to keep the landfill open. Those costs are very high, we're talking big dollars here to keep the landfill open, but it's even greater. And as long as we have the landfill open, we're getting revenue. So, those are the things that the public needs to decide, you know, as they look at these issues, that closure will mean a very big cost to actually put that. And then we have continued costs, it's 'cause we close the landfill, we don't walk away from it. There's environmental monitoring, there's water sampling, there's mowing, you know, there's all this stuff that still has to be done after the landfill's closed, there's more, still continued costs. And then we have these other things that we're gonna have to deal with. And those are sort of an unknown, versus we know what's gonna cost to operate the landfill. And with working with Seemee Mahar, them discovering another way to expand, you know, capacity, i- is, is a big deal. So, I, I think those are things that people need to consider when they're looking at, you know, whether to keep it open or not.
And I, I just want to mention that, this happened when I was first on the council, I don't know, almost 10 years ago. The council voted to close the landfill. It wasn't, it wasn't unanimous, but the citizens got it on the ballot, and they voted to keep it open. And that was the right decision to make. We can now look back at that. It made sense. It, for some people, it made sense to them then, and they were right, so.
May have a lot to do with the stink, too.
Yeah. I mean, there were, there was, there was a situation happening at that point.
At that point, yeah.
But that's all been, that, that's for the most part been fixed. I mean, they've been working very hard out there to make sure that everything's in working order, and that problem was fixed. Susan?
I have a technical question. When it's closed, eventually, hopefully, does that torch, that goes away?
That'll continue to operate for a while.
For a long time. What will happen is-
Can you speak into the microphone? Sorry. So people can hear you at home.
What will happen will, eventually, it'll get to a point where it will cycle on and off, is right now, it operates continuously, but as the, the gas dries up, and it, it will go on and it will shut down, it will run for a couple hours a day, and then shut down. And when there's enough gas, it will come on. And so it, it has a, a sparkler that, if there's gas there, it will light it and ignite it, but once it gets down below it, it goes off, so. And that will continue-
Long time.
On, you know, on, pretty much. What we find is that it actually drop, by putting a type of plastic covers over it, actually you dry the waste out. And one of the items you need to generate landfill gas is moisture, so you'll see that drop off quicker when you put the cover on it, so. But it will, we'll see it continue to-
Nearly 20 years or so, for sure. Yeah, 20 plus years.
EcoMaine has a facility that we've done some work with, and they have a closed capped landfill, which has MSW in it, and it operates, we, we looked at, could we pull enough gas out of there? Could we re-initiate the gas, you know, gas generation by adding moisture into it? And we, we were a little bit successful, but we just couldn't get it consistent enough, 'cause we basically had dried the whole wa, the wasteland.
That landfill's been closed for almost 30 years, I think.
Quite a long time.
So, the water encourages the decomposition of matter in the landfill, and that's what creates the gas, so.
One would think, I mean, you would never think that it would be drying out under there. You would think it'd be perpetually damp.
Yeah.
Well, it, it won't take on new moisture once it's capped with a rubber cap.
Yeah. But the, but the gas, the, the gas collection system is drawing air through and pulling moisture out of the landfill, so that, that's how it sort of dries it out, a ventilation, like a little bit of ventilation.
It's complex.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is your chance to ask questions of the experts. Sure you can get things answered later, but... Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We don't need to adjourn, so everyone have a good night.
Motion to adjourn.
And we will do it.